What do you say to your caller? What do you say to your caller, Alan?
That song still works.
That one does work.
Oh, he was too.
And you're not one of them.
So when's all this been showing up?
What ballgame was it?
No ballgame.
Yeah, when's that guy show up? It works.
It only by listening.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to officially call to order the Madison County Planning Commission business session for Tuesday, November the 19th, 2019 to order. Now, it's our secretary call roll, please.
Alan Hatfield?
Here.
Doug Prince?
Here.
Shannon Tinnington?
Here.
Robert Farmer?
Here.
Paula Mianci?
Here.
Drew Alexander?
Here.
Lawrence Sparsu?
Here.
To let the record show, we do have a point, and the next order of business is approval of the minutes. Everyone should have received a copy of the minutes in their packet. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes as received?
Shannon, can you fix your microphone or something?
Oh, yeah.
Just be careful.
Okay, if not, then I'll open the floor for a motion.
Some room to read the top of the ad.
Second.
No motion and a second.
Further discussion?
If not, we'll have a vote.
Alan Hatfield?
Yes.
Doug Prince?
Yes.
Shannon Tinnington?
Yes.
Paula Mianci?
Yes.
Drew Alexander?
Yes.
Lawrence Sparsu?
Yes.
Robert Farmer?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is preliminary plat extension for Shiloh Cove subdivision. Burke?
Yeah, this is, they're just about done with Phase One. They don't have any plans or I don't see anything to be submitted for the additional phase. They just want the option to extend that in case they then want to develop that phase at some point. I don't think already it's changed that much since that preliminary was approved, so there just isn't an extension of what they've already got approved.
Were they submit a letter?
I'm sorry?
They submit a letter?
Should be a copy of the new plat. Yeah, we're discussing whether we want their extension.
I would move that we grant a one-year extension of the preliminary plat for Shiloh Cove subdivision.
Okay, have a motion to approve the preliminary plat extension for Shiloh Cove subdivision or second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll have a vote.
Lawrence Sparsu?
Yes.
Drew Alexander?
Yes.
Paula Mianci?
Yes.
Shannon Tinnington?
Yes.
Doug Prince?
Yes.
Alan Hatfield?
Yes.
Robert Farmer?
Yes.
Next on our agenda is the final plat, Twin Lakes Phase Two, Trillia and Maloop. Burke?
Yeah, so I don't think you all actually had anything for them at the work session. We had a couple items, just housekeeping things that were correct around here, adding the legend and one of the details to the curve. Other than that, I think they've done everything that's asked us to. Obviously, the number of signatures on this copy, I think they're requesting a condition approval upon getting all the signatures before Robert signs it.
Any commission members have any common air of concern? Okay, if not, then open the floor for a motion.
I'm making a motion that we approve the final plat for Twin Lakes Phase Two, Trillia and Maloop. Opinion of receiving all the required signatures.
Okay, have a motion to approve those conditions without giving the signatures. Is there a second to that?
No, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll have a vote.
Paula Mianci?
Yes.
Drew Alexander?
Yes.
Lawrence Sparsu?
Yes.
Shannon Tinnington?
Yes.
Doug Prince?
Yes.
Alan Hatfield?
Yes.
Robert Farmer?
Yes.
Next order of business, the final plat, Seven Oaks Tahoe Way, Phase One.
Again, this is a, I don't think y'all had much for with work session. We had a list of items that we needed to get cleaned up. I believe Martin and I were over. I think they did all that. I believe the developers here tonight and wants to address, as well as maybe some other members of the audience that might want to address the commission as you call on them and maybe if you got any questions for them, you can put it out there. They can present what they want to present.
Okay. Any commission members have any comments or concerns? Before I recognize anyone?
You get far forward and you get a chance to sum up at the end of the line.
Any questions or comments?
I think we'll listen to comments and then we'll go from there.
Please state your name and address for the record, so we have a record here.
Jack Markham, 1030 Royal Crest.
Okay. Mr. Markham, go ahead.
All right. The objection that I am receiving or questions is over the restrictions. Planning on changing the restrictions. Mr. Acton is here and he is representing the homeowners association, I understand it. Won't bore you all with the long list, but have several things here to go over real quick. In his letter, the homeowners association objects to your developing this new phase with lesser restrictions, smaller square footage requirements, for example, than the restrictions imposed on the owners of Phase One, which will obviously mean cheaper homes and lower devalued home prices for Phase One. Bring it up to date here. I've been licensed realtor since 97, my wife since 2008. She has been a top 10 realtor in Madison County since 2008, the number one agent, 16, 17, and 18. I tell you this to tell you we are not devaluing your home prices. Up until 2015, I would have agreed with Mr. Acton's statement. It's a wives' tale. It's something we've been told and it's not true. The reason I have reduced it, I wrote a letter here that I forwarded to my attorney that I believe Mr. Acton got today, and whether you got it or not, I don't know. Jack and Amanda Markham are the developers of Tahoe Way. We understand the current, are concerned about the restrictions being less restrictive. We have reduced the minimum square footage in an effort to sell every lot. There are some lots that will be steep and very difficult to build upon. This in turn will require walkout basements for those homes, thus making those homes twice as large as the minimum restrictions. Your own subdivision of Seven Oaks is a perfect example of this for the existing lots that are there. They are very unsightly at best. Good lots, but unsightly. For this reason, we have noticed in Madison County that these types of lots become dumping areas for neighborhoods. Dumping areas meaning grass clippings. You trim your trees, you dump them there. Besides being an eyesore for the neighbors, they're unsafe and hurt existing home values in these subdivisions, which I'll go over in just a second. As we are investing in this property as a whole, we would not do anything to lessen any of your home's values. As local realtors and business owners, the more your home is worth, the more our home is worth. Adding value to the county is a priority for us. These restrictions are simply a minimum, and with the current cost of building materials in our ideal location, the likely minimum sales price for said homes will be the near $250,000. That's for the minimum. We fully expect most homes built on Tahoe Way will be larger than the minimum required, as most of the existing homes currently are in Seven Oaks. Now, here's where the numbers, y'all do what you want to, but the numbers definitely don't lie. In 2019, all these numbers come from Elbar, the Lexington Board Association of Realtors, in Richmond. Richmond being defined as area code 40475, or zip code, I'm sorry, 40475. So that's Richmond City and Madison County. The average price per finished square foot for a home built from '05 to '15, reason I did that is that's the average age home of Seven Oaks subdivision. I'm using this just like a realtor. I was coming in to sell your home, was $102. The average for a new construction home in 2019 was $128. I built three homes on Igoe Road, which used to be Simpson, three miles from this subdivision. I sold those for $140 a square foot. This is proof that we plan to bring values up to the area for the benefit of all. I did some numbers here based on this. Seven Oaks minimum square footage right now is 1,700. If I use the $128, which was the average for new construction, that home would sell for $217,600. The three homes on Igoe, 1,350 square feet, sold for $140 a square foot, or 189,000. The same home, 1,350, that I built, if I were to build that same home in Seven Oaks subdivision, I would feel I could sell that home for 205,000. You're going to ask me why. Number one, it's an existing subdivision. The lock cost, lock cost being the appraised, I actually have an appraisal on the lots, the homeowners association, sidewalk and street lights. That is $151.85, is what I feel confident. There's a current listing in Seven Oaks. Listed price is 425,000. The square footage is 3,982. That translates out to $106.73 a square foot. Based on what I told you, that's a little light, in my opinion, but if everyone's happy, so be it. The existing Seven Oaks lots were available for sale on MLS for $26,000. I have an appraisal on the 14 lots that I have done now at 38,500.
Throw your head, Mr. Markham.
That's it. The devalue situation is just...
Was the square footage the only thing that was...
I'm changing the square footage. In the, in the original Seven Oaks is, it's a little funny the way it reads. Took my glasses off. Shall be either brick or stone or a combination thereof. Vinyl siding or drive it shall be permissible in the construction of a residence so long as the same are limited to areas in which the use of brick or stone are impracticable. You can put brick on anything. So, you know, I don't really know, but the call now, there's a lot of call for, well, just vinyl sided homes, hardy board. There's a lot. Also, Seven Oaks original, they exclude some lots here that you could put a log home on. I don't know why. It's just a little unusual the way it's written.
So if I read this right, if the minimum on one floor is 1,300 square feet, a story and a half is 1,400 square feet, and two-story is 1,600 square feet, is that...
That's correct. That's on what I'm proposing.
Yeah.
Yes.
But that was the only restriction that you, that's different from Seven Oaks restrictions?
Uh...
That Mr. Acton wrote you that or...
He didn't, I don't think there's any other restrictions that are questioned as far as outbuildings, they have to match, you know, all of that.
Right.
If I understand that the current minimum square footage of a Seven Oaks house, that would be a one-story house, is 1,700 square feet, right? And you're proposing that the minimum square footage in Tahoe Way should be 1,300 square feet.
As a minimum. That doesn't mean that I want...
I know that. I know that. That's what they're...
Right. Yeah, well, I mean, my, just, they all built over the minimum.
Yeah, I know that.
My home, I built almost double what the minimum was, and there's two minimums across the street from me. As a realtor, I did that. It never crossed my mind.
Okay, any other questions? Any commission members may have?
Yes. What type of siding requirements do you have in the old restrictions?
That's what I went over there. The brick, stone, and vinyl only were impracticable.
And the new one?
The new, brick front, brick skirt.
So they put vinyl on the other three sides of the...
Correct.
Okay. So the square footage is lowered by 400 square foot, the siding is changed? Roof pitch, did it change?
It did. I changed it to 512, and that's basically, yeah, for a two-story home, you'll never notice the difference.
From what?
812.
Okay.
And, and the other reason for that, if you build a, a lot of homes will have a, well, I'm sure in Seven Oaks, 812, 1012, and 1212, all on the same house. But if you come down on the, if you did it on 512, 812, and 1012, you'd really never notice the difference. A lot of these figures that I came with here are, the reason I brought up the real estate part of it is the example of why she and the team have been number one, because we do get the most out of it. There is a lot to learn on doing that. And what I did was take that and move that knowledge over into building. And it's, it's a lot of it from an appraiser's point of view.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the commission members before I recognize anyone in the audience?
Any other significant changes?
No, I, I formed a homeowners association for Tahoe Way. Already formed it, already paid the deposit at KU, putting streetlights in. I chose the same streetlights as Seven Oaks.
Was there one for Seven Oaks also?
There's a Seven Oaks homeowners association also. Yeah, this would be a separate leader, a separate everything.
Homeowners association.
Separate entrance?
I think he knows the answer to that.
Is there a separate entrance?
No, there's not. Simpson Lane wouldn't allow that. I looked at it, but it's not wide enough and there's not enough, the way the hill is there, you can't, it didn't meet your own restrictions.
I understand.
As I've done on everything else.
Yeah, we didn't acquire that on the preliminary, did we? Yeah, okay. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Sparsu, are you finished or...
Yes.
Just like I had, of course, everything's in, electric, water, black tile.
Yeah, sidewalks, I saw sidewalks.
Sidewalks aren't in there. No, that's coming down on an existing home.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Markham. At this time, I'd like to recognize anyone in the audience, or you have a spokesperson.
I'm looking for it.
Mr. Acton?
Please.
Please state your name and address and who you represent.
I will. Thank you, Mr. Farmer. My name is Walt Acton, 127 South Third Street, and I represent the Seven Oaks Homeowners Association. I'll try to be brief and to the point. Just using Mr. Markham's figures, I think there is a substantial difference. At $145 a square foot, which I think is one of the, the billing blocks that he talked about, at 400 square feet less, you know, you're talking about, well, that plus the houses in Seven Oaks are either stone or they're brick, as opposed to vinyl and hardy siding. You know, you're probably talking about $125,000, a difference for the same, from the houses in Seven Oaks to the houses in the property right behind it. When I say the property right behind it, I guess it's clear that the homeowners object to the subdivision restrictions. They feel that, from a planning perspective, and certainly from the impact to them and what they've relied on in the subdivision restrictions that they have, that they're done wrong. If you look at the subdivision plats that have been filed, back in May of 2005, there was a subdivision, a preliminary subdivision restriction for, subdivision plat for Seven Oaks. And it essentially is what is now Seven Oaks Phase One. And then you drive through Seven Oaks Phase One, which is where all these people live, and come upon Tahoe Way, which has always been there. And this is essentially Phase Two of Seven Oaks. There's no difference in the development of Phase One plus Phase Two than was what was originally proposed as Seven Oaks back in 2005. The, the lesser restrictions, in the letter that I sent to Mr. Markham, it talked primarily about the square footage requirement difference. But it's also the siding difference. There's a big difference in cost in terms of a brick and stone versus hardy board or vinyl siding. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with either of them, but there's a big difference in terms of valuation. The, the interesting thing about the way it was developed and laid out, and many of the members of the homeowners association, I think, want to talk, they relied on those subdivision restrictions that they were given, and some of them were told, and the same restrictions will be in the adjoining land that is marked on the plat that they got, to be developed.
Mr. Acton?
That it would be the same.
I haven't had attempts to look at all records. I just found out about a lot of this, but you're not talking. Are there, is there a plat that's of record for any land that, what you call in Seven Oaks Phase One and Two, other than Seven Oaks Phase One, that's of record with the clerk's office? I wasn't clear on that.
Yeah, and I'm not sure whether that preliminary plat, they used to always file the preliminary plats. I do not know. I was not able to locate.
Probably not.
I, I can't say one way or the other.
Do the restrictions for Seven Oaks, do they just say Seven Oaks, or do they say Seven Oaks Phase One, or Seven Oaks Phase One and Two, or what do they say?
They do say Seven Oaks Phase One.
They specifically do say Phase One?
They do. But the subdivisions, I don't know how anybody would be able to tell that the subdivision they drive through Seven Oaks to get to, which is now under consideration, was a separate subdivision from Seven Oaks. It's just a continuation of the street. It has a common entrance off of Coates Ferry Road. It has the same infrastructure of utilities and water. It has the same access to streets that Seven Oaks uses, and is only accessed through Seven Oaks. It just developed at two separate times. People, I think, think of planning zoning in large part, and I know I was on, I was president of the Chamber of Commerce at the time, in terms of planning. And we'd like to avoid planning issues like this. We feel like, as they've said, that they will feel they've been done wrong. I would ask that, to give us time to meet with the developer, I sent a letter out, but I received no response, that this be either passed, tabled, or voted down until we've had a chance to meet and see if we can't work out some of these problems, because it's, it potentially impacts people who are trying to sell in Seven Oaks now in a, a big way. So that would be my request.
Mr. Acton?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you asserting that this issue falls under subdivision regulations? I think it's 408, which is called the housing compatibility standards.
I can't say that I am. I think there is a difference in terms of housing compatibility.
There is a housing compatibility standard in the subdivision regulations. Are you asserting that your argument is based on housing compatibility standards?
I can't say I fully researched that. I, I understand that there's a, a, a regulation and a standards issue there. I guess, without having said I've fully researched it, I guess I would answer yes to what you say.
I know, driving through Seven Oaks, some of those houses are not all brick. They have vinyl in two. Is there a, is the restrictions on Seven Oaks, is it like 80% of the house has to be brick? Because there's some vinyl above the main floor?
My understanding of the restrictions are even broader than that, that it is to be brick or stone, except for where you, the lay of the land does not allow.
Well, this was in the upper, I guess, the upper stairs or upper floor of the house. Some of it looked like it had some kind of, I guess they call them shakes, shake type siding on it, sort of gray, sort of matched the brick.
Okay.
It wasn't 100% brick.
The subdivision restrictions, I think, essentially call for 100% brick or 100% stone, except for places that are hard to get to.
And, and Jack, or how's yours different than that? I mean, is, do you have like 8%, 6%?
No, it's a, it's a full brick front and brick skirt. In other words, there's no exposed block anywhere. It'll have to be, I mean, that's just the minimum. That doesn't...
We don't make that comments from, from the audience. We can't get it on the record. If you're going to ask him questions, he needs to be at the mic.
And I might be able to respond to that in a second, but I understood that they could be hardy board or vinyl sided houses. And I'll, I'll have to relook at the restrictions.
Well, as far as my knowledge, I don't remember us ever getting involved in writing the restrictions or having jurisdiction over the restrictions. I think we have question about...
Jim, you want to, you want to...
I think, Mr. Farmers, describing this board's role completely off the top. The board's role, generally speaking, is in approving a final plat, is to find out whether that plat conforms with our rates. And that, that's sort of the beginning and end of the inquiry going through this board. Now, part of that might have to do with restrictions, if, if the restrictions apply to that subdivision as it's been developed and presented to this board. And that's, that's sort of why I was asking, Mr. Acton, what's been recorded, what's actually a plat and what isn't a plat? Because that might be something that you want to talk about. But as far as getting into a private cause of action, or, which is what subdivision restrictions are, they're private land restrictions that are private individuals. This board generally, generally speaking, doesn't get involved in that. It's not as well.
Burke, we've had phasing in the past. Haven't we had some different restrictions?
We've had subdivisions in the county that had different restrictions for different phases, yes.
The only time I remember in the 12 years of us even mentioning this was when Shiloh Cove started and it backed up to Shiloh Crest?
Point.
Shiloh Point. The houses that were really backed up to Shiloh Point. It was that regulation. It was a regulation that was brought up, and that was the housing compatibility.
There is a compatibility standard, but that, that standard specifically mentions gradual transitions or phases.
Yes, yes.
It specifically mentions phases.
And it was only that strip that was right against Shiloh Point, that there were some modifications made in how the houses looked for compatibility.
But that was something the developer made.
That was the developer who made that, that, because it was right, he was, he wanted to be within the regulation. But that's the only time I remember us.
To my memory, the only deed restrictions that we've really focused on in the past has been who's going to take care of the detention area if it's split by the lots. That, that, there's something they're saying that...
But I think, I think even in recent times, we've actually included language on the plat itself that, that addresses that. So even that doesn't necessarily need to be in the restrictions anymore, unless the developer just wants some backup to the...
It's come up generally only when a subdivision owner is asking a zoning change and, a zoning change for a lot in a subdivision where there's deed restrictions. I think it's come up in that context, not too distantly. But we don't really get into subdivision, of course, or subdivision restrictions.
My, my only question would be is, why is it called Phase One?
That's just the title we put on it. Tahoe Way was part of the original preliminary plat that included Hamster Woods, included Seven Oaks, and it included Tahoe Way. Tahoe Way sat idle for so many years with no development that we required the new developer, or in this case, before Mr. Markham bought it, the original developer, to resubmit a preliminary plat, because that preliminary plat has long since expired. So that was just, that was just a title that was given to Tahoe Way. I don't think anybody's ever suggested it's a, it's a different subdivision. It's just, as part of the process of getting this development back going again, we required a preliminary plat, because the other one had expired.
Kind of like what we talked about earlier, about, you know, we received a letter from someone that's got an incomplete subdivision. They asked for an extension.
Right. But they never asked for the extension on Tahoe Way, or that phase of Hamster Woods Seven Oaks. So that preliminary plat went away, because they didn't ask for the extension.
Yeah, I think that's the great point, is that their nature of preliminary plat is that it has a time limit shelf life, and it, it's not even a valid plat if the preliminary shelf life expires.
So that, that's the point I wanted to, okay. So that, that's the point I wanted to, okay.
Well, and of course, my concern is that it was originally planned as part of a common scheme. And looking at it, going into it, you couldn't tell you were going from one subdivision to another. So as Bert said, for all practical purposes, it is one subdivision.
I, I think all the points you made, I read your letter, I think those are super valid points, as far as maybe a civil case and a private cause of action, but I don't know how relevant they are to what this board does. It definitely has, meets a lot of those, meets a lot of that criteria for a very fact-based decision for somebody to make, but not this...
And, and the only thing that I would ask is that this be tabled, so that we can work with the developer to attempt to work that out, so that, to the extent we can come up with consistency that we can.
I'm not sure that the board tabling this, approving this, or denying this prohibits you from still being able to approach the developer and have that conversation. I mean, he hasn't, hasn't started building any houses yet, and that's a conversation that can still be had. And like Jim says, if, if, if the compromise can't be reached, and there's, there's other civil action that could be taken by the homeowners association at that point.
Any commission members have any questions or concerns?
Check, and you represent everybody here tonight, or is there other people in the audience?
I represent the homeowners association. I did understand there were some that wanted to make statements.
And Mr. Chairman, if you want to recognize a couple more of you in the audience, that's your...
Does anyone else in the audience have a different view or concerns? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Lindsay Arnold. My address is 125 Seven Oaks Drive. I would just like to say, on behalf of our entire neighborhood, we are all about, obviously, moving forward and growing as a county. We obviously want to be prosperous, and we are all about growth. I think the thing, and we are, obviously, I think it's a great thing that Mr. Markham is wanting to further our county with additional homes. The biggest concern, and then I would ask everybody in this room who is not associated with our homeowners association to think about, is if you lived in this neighborhood, and there were going to be homes that were going to be built, that were lesser homes than what the average or the standard home was that represented your neighborhood, what would you be doing? None of us were privy to any of this information. And honestly, it wasn't until ground was broken that any of us even, like, came together and said, hey, we need to find out what's going on. We've not been informed on any of the information, or on any of the proposals or anything for the new addition to Tahoe Way, any of the changes, any of the, the fact that it's gonna have a different homeowners association. And quite frankly, right is right and wrong is wrong. And this is wrong. We were not informed on anything. We've not been brought up to speed. We've not learned anything from the developer or from the previous developer. And what, again, what I would ask you, what I would ask Mr. Markham, is if there were going to be lesser homes, whether you're talking size, whether you're talking the outside finish, what would you be doing? We're all here because this is the right thing to do. We need to ask questions, and if it were your home, or if it were your home that were gonna be affected by it, you guys would be asking the same thing, because it could possibly affect the resale value, the property value, and that is all of our, that's every single one of our concerns. We're not about saying, we don't want you to build homes. We want homes built. That obviously just affects the property value. What we're concerned with is the fact that the homes are gonna be less than what our homes are, or if you do an average of our subdivision, the homes that are being built, the homes that Mr. Markham built on Eagle Rose, those are very nice homes, but they're not the kind of home that I live in, or that anybody else in the audience who lives in Seven Oaks lives in. I'm not saying anything negative about those homes. I think they're very nice homes, but they're not the kind of home that I live in. I bought my home. Some people built their homes under the pretense that we were going to live in a, in a subdivision such as Seven Oaks. Therefore, it's only the right thing that this be followed out, and this be what follows suit. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anyone else in the audience has a different concern?
Pretty good job representing.
Please state your name and address for a record, please.
Paul Addy, 133 Seven Oaks Drive. When we bought into the neighborhood, I understand the property values, because everyone's neighborhood was thirty-six thousand and above, as far as the lots were at the time. And when we bought into the subdivision, only reason we bought into that subdivision, it had a great HOA. I knew I wasn't gonna have someone coming in and putting lesser homes, letting people crud, crud up the yards. I'm a good old Southern redneck, I, I'm all about it. I had to buy a lot somewhere else that I can have all my junk. But I can tell you that when you, you let another subdivision come in right beside us, and call it a different name, whatever, you put it right beside us, and you build these smaller, lesser valuable homes right next to mine. I know what I've got in mind, the houses he's talking about, probably two seventy, two eighty, I can promise you, most everyone in this room's house is a lot more than that on that, on that road. A two hundred and seventy thousand dollar home is a nice home, don't get me wrong, but at the same time, I've got a lot more than that in my house. And I don't want someone coming in and screwing up my value, when there's something I could potentially do to keep that from happening. If I can get someone to build the exact same type, type of houses right beside me, hey, that's great. That's awesome. And that's why I bought and built in that neighborhood, was just to make sure that nothing was gonna change the value of my home. So maybe I'm looking at it wrong from what this committee is capable of doing, but that is why we're all here. We wanna make sure that all these people are represented, and that we're getting fair treatment as far as what this guy wants to, to build. Do I say he's doing wrong as far as building houses? Heck, no. If I was a developer, that's exactly what I'm trying to do, get the most bang for my buck getting, building a house. But at the same time, you bought into the neighborhood, like we did, you expect that everything else that comes into that neighborhood is gonna be exactly the same. Guess that's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. I have time for one more. Anyone else have something, maybe something different to add? Yes, sir?
Yes, I'm Marvin Smith, at 116 Seven Oaks Drive. Same as me, when I bought in the subdivision, I felt that the houses would all be brick, and under the standards that we have. I do own the lot on Tahoe Lane, and I bought it with the same restrictions from Robert Locker. I feel that I'm not part of the subdivision behind there, but evidently, it sounds like I'm being joined into it. All we ask is for respectable homes that are going through our subdivision, not making his own subdivision, which is actually our subdivision had to go through. I know vinyl siding, and everything looks fine. It does crack and break, bow, and blow off. Brick does do a very substantial job on a home. And as far as the square footing goes, as long as it's brick, and like he says, he'd be putting basements in most of them, they probably won't be finished ever, but, because people don't usually do that, in my respect, that I know of from real estate agents and things that I know. But I feel that if we own the house on, or even a lot on Tahoe Lane, means I can put a siding house on my lot, because the restrictions are changed somewhere in Seven Oaks, or will they have to be the same? And I know, I, I respect your group and, and what you cover, but like you said, he would like to have it held, or at least be looked at by the magistrate before he signs over on it. I mean, it's the last step, and what you'll be doing is probably putting us, I'm retired, and I built this house to retire it. And, and I put everything I put into it. And I do keep up my home, and I respect other people do too. But the problem is, is that when you have a lesser grade subdivision, I know they say it's not gonna change dividing siding, and, and probably the, the block on the bottom might not be finished with siding, or, you know, even wooden homes. It doesn't do any respect for our subdivision. Our subdivision was planned one way. I know you have no way of changing it, but I, I feel that your, your board should at least respect the people that own a subdivision that put nice homes in. I don't know what y'all live in, or what you wanna live around, sir. I, I look and watch where I live, and I have my whole life. And I've lived here twenty-six years in Kentucky, and I've built two new homes, and I've had no problems, because everybody respected the size and the type of homes. In the last subdivision I lived in, they did have a log roll, and it was okay. But in, in Seven Oaks, it's changed. It's something that I bought a lot on maybe nine years ago, and bought my other one eight years ago, my second lot, and it didn't build till six years ago. But I felt that the terms and agreements of Seven Oaks would be the same when Robert started his Phase Two. And he said it's gonna be a while before he did it and all that, when I talked to him. But then again, it's not him, it's the people in front of us that does the judgment, and that he's done everything he had, but he's planning on building lesser homes, smaller homes, than what's already in Seven Oaks, which is being looked over. So you guys are committed to one thing only, it's not what size homes and stuff, but you have to respect that you're allowing him to build smaller homes in Seven Oaks, which is already established. And of course, everyone in here pretty much worries about their home. I mean, I've got a lot of money in my home and lots, and I keep them up. I mow every week my second lot, and I had it all bulldozed off, and all the trees taken out, and twenty loads of tops sown, everything. But I wanted it nice, and so it would stand up to the rest of the subdivision. Now, you're allowing it to be changed. That's one thing I, I would like to do, is, is have it looked at before you okay it, and he goes to the magistrate, and everything's gone, and it's gonna cost our subdivision twenty thousand dollars or so to fight it. And we're, you know, I mean, I don't know how far we can go, but we are gonna fight it. I mean, I can see brick homes. I can't see siding. I can't. I've, I've, I've been living for sixty-five years, and siding does not hold up. Even your vinyl siding dents. I mean, I've got aluminum siding, and it dents. Your vinyl siding breaks, cracks, bows, and all the other good stuff. And I guarantee he's not gonna go for aluminum, because it's costing more, and it's gonna get into the brick price, where you don't wanna pay for the brick to put on the outside. And the homes, every home there, even if the lot didn't perk, and there was a drop-off, they filled it, they put the dirt in there, they put a step system in there for the, the septic field, because it wouldn't perk, and they have no lot, but they built. There's a house next to me, now it's gotta be at least four hundred thousand, that they built, before you guys, before they start taxing and everything else. And like him, they probably are not here, they live next to us. But it's, it's something that we're very concerned about. We would actually ask y'all if you could consider holding it off, till we find out what we can do about it, before we spend our hard-earned money on something that we already had and lost, because nobody would listen. Please, I, I, anyways, I, I, I respect y'all, and I do respect the builder. He's a nice guy, he just has a way of making the money for the house, without putting the brick, any other options that are on our amendment. Anyways, that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions or comments?
I have a question for Mr. Markham, if he would come back to the podium. Mr. Markham, on your plat, your northeast lots, one through eight, are labeled one through eight, okay? But your southwest lots are forty-two, forty-one, forty, thirty-nine, thirty-eight, thirty-seven, thirty-six. Are these lots left over from Seven Oaks that were not built on?
Well, yeah, it was, the, what I did was, Mr. Locker already had this laid out, and I went with the road the way it was already laid out, and the lot numbers, the way that they existed.
And the lot sizes too.
The lot, yeah, no, I didn't change any lot size or anything.
This was Locker, Locker layout of Seven Oaks.
Right up on A.
Okay.
This, this is, this, what we're, we're calling this Seven Oaks Tahoe Way, Phase One. This addition is considered Seven Oaks subdivision, correct? Or is this something else?
As long as you talk about preliminary plat, let's just, let me remind y'all that when, when we do a preliminary plat, we don't require deed restrictions.
Sure.
We don't require letters of credit. So I think we don't require, because the preliminary plat is just that, it's a vision for the whole development. So, and it, most of the time, I would say, changes between a preliminary plat and a final plat. The reason the, you know, you call this what you want to, but this, this road was part of the original preliminary plat. That preliminary plat expired. It was brought back as a different preliminary plat. So you're getting into the semantics of naming, is it this, or is it that, or what is it? When at the end of the day, this was a, a new preliminary plat that was brought. It was, it was seen as part of the original preliminary, but it's different because of the timing. Could you jump in there if I'm saying things not right?
That's right. It's the same lane. It, it always is. You can call it what you want. It's, it has GPS coordinates. It's the same exact lane.
Again, when we do phases, we do phases of development.
Phases and approved final plats have legal meaning.
Right.
And, and when, when a, when a preliminary plat expires, it no longer has...
It doesn't get recorded, it's not official, there's, there's nothing, addresses change, street names change. You know, you might be excavating for your road and hit a sinkhole, and have to move your road a hundred yards to the east or west, or whatever.
Once you've got preliminary plat, those lots don't really exist.
They don't exist.
They can't be sold, they're not subdivided anymore.
They're not even pinned, in a lot of cases, because they may change.
Yeah, I, I know. So you have a different homeowners association for this group here?
Well, I, I formed one, yes.
What's the name of that homeowners association?
So what would be the Tahoe Way? Why would you do that?
Well, because there are different restrictions.
Well, I mean, you're wanting to make a difference, that's why you did that, right?
I suppose, yes. If I may, while I'm up here?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, just, yes, I would definitely be here if I thought someone was divesting my home. I hear you loud and clear, every one of you, I would be here. Some things that you, that I've heard that you may not know, I don't know, maybe y'all know, and I'll be quick. Hardy board's actually the most expensive, then brick, then vinyl. For example, you have a four thousand, based on my numbers, we'll just round off to a hundred dollars a square foot. You've got a four thousand square foot home, it's worth four hundred thousand, it's all brick. I love it. I build right across the street, I do all vinyl. Mine appraises for the same thing yours does. One hundred percent. You can ask any licensed appraiser in the state of Kentucky. All I'm doing, when they do an appraisal, they do a six-mile radius, and they can't change the county, and they can't go Fager Clark, they have seen our county. They're gonna stay in this subdivision. If I sell this home for the two oh five that I think, that's a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, when I've just shown you, if I were coming to list your home, I'd only be in the hundred and six range. That's gonna change your value. It's going up. It's not going down in any way. Ma'am, the, the numbers don't lie, I promise you. These are not my numbers, these are the Lexington Board Association Realtor numbers.
They may be, but if you put...
Ma'am, we can't take comment from the audience, I'm sorry, we can't get you on the record.
Anyway, that's, I have also, as I said, they're going to take it as far as they have to. I would ask y'all to approve this, based on the fact that I've met everything. I have been advised by council, if I build my square footage, is what can happen if they take me to court, and they win. I've also been advised, what happens if I build third square footage, is if they go to court and they win, or I win, it doesn't matter. So, I mean, I feel like that their objections are more than heard, and as I said, I would be here if I were them, okay? And as far as, I mean, I promise you, this has not been a secret, my wife and I are, we're Realtors, we answer the phone, emails, we're easy to get ahold of, and we just talk to, be happy to talk to Walt, or, or the group, or whatever, and try to work something out. But as far as this goes, I mean, I... But as far as this goes, I mean, I've met everything that's supposed to be done, and from there, I, I don't know what else to do.
Mr. Markham, I've got a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
Is this going to be considered a phase of Seven Oaks, or is this a new, I guess, development call or what?
I think we've already kind of covered that.
Okay, good enough then. Are you going to have a, any kind of different entry wall coming in, or is this just going to be a straight road connected to that subdivision? Okay.
I mean, I can.
That's it.
Yeah, I mean, the road's built. I don't know if you've been out there and looked at it, but the road's...
Well, I, I know that farm very well, and I just wanted to see if there was going to be any kind of differentiation in between the two developments or areas, I should say.
There was a stub out, and Seven Oaks was originally built.
Yeah.
Hundred yards, a hundred and fifty yards off of Seven Oaks Drive, and they just added all, they just added a municipality to that.
Yeah. Going on down that ridge. Okay.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Markham? Thank you, Jack. Does any commission members have any other comments to the public or...
I do hope that you all can sit down and have a negotiation about the house of the gradual housing compatibility. And, you know, I, I, I think if you, if you look at housing compatibility and phase it in, you may be able to negotiate on this, because I, I do hear what both of you are saying.
Okay, anyone else?
As a planning and zoning member, I've always valued my position to do what is in the best interest of the group, that's including Mr. Markham and Seven Oaks. I've written down everything I can, kind of like you did when you were a child, you decided the pros and the cons, and you draw the line. The problem that we're coming up against is that Phase One plat and then the Tahoe Way plat was never continued. So the problem that we have as a board, and you correct me if I'm wrong, is that we don't make the decision to whether it's right or wrong on the size of the house he's building or how he's filming it. We got to base it on the regulations that we are required to go by. And being in business, I made a phone call yesterday to a gentleman and told him it's going to be a hard decision. I'm going to weigh out the facts. But when you weigh out the facts, you got to think that there's a certain amount of things that we're responsible to do, and we're not the ones that are going to make the decision on what's right or wrong for Seven Oaks because that Tahoe Way Phase One is a new plat that he's asking us to approve tonight. And if the original owner would have made that Phase Two and submitted a plat and it had been approved with those restrictions, we would be having this conversation. Is that correct?
I'm not sure that's accurate. Because like I said, we have subdivisions in this county that were developed in phases by the same developer that have different deed restrictions for different phases.
But if they had them for both these phases, if the deed restrictions had been listed, would that be a new...
You wouldn't have listed them for the next phase.
Because we don't have anything to do with that.
Deed restrictions are done in phases. So I don't think, I think either way, at the end of the day, this board obviously is on the record as, as having concerns for the homeowners out there.
Absolutely.
But with that being said, this board also is on the record, and their council has commented that this is probably not the venue to discuss those. We've never dealt with deed restrictions. We do have a compatibility standard, that's not what this is. So the board has to remember what their role is.
And that's what I'm...
And there's a, there's a, that's why we have men and women in black robes and big courthouses because everybody has, has an option to appeal a decision if they don't agree with it.
And whatever decision is made here, we're not the ones that approve it. It goes for the kind of judge.
This, this, your decision has really nothing to do with Mr. Ekton's claim and...
I'm saying that would be the next step, though.
It's a different case, it's a different...
The next step would be straight to a lawsuit.
What you decide has nothing, he has a case, and he has a good argument, and you're not adjudicating it.
And we don't want to be.
Well, if you want to, then not, but you're not, you're not, it's not your role. It's, it's, whether, whatever you decide, he still has a good case and a good argument, okay? That's not what you decide.
Okay, thanks.
We don't decide, the rules are strict, it's applied to Mr. Markham.
Any other comment for the commission?
Thank you.
Okay, if not, then I'll, Mr. Markham says he wants to proceed, so we'll open the floor for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we deny the application for the final plat for Tahoe Phase One. I do not think it is in the best interest of planning and zoning of the county. I don't think, I'm just not in agreement with it. I think there's some other things that can be worked out and make things a little better.
That a motion deny this final plat, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
A motion to deny and second. Any further discussion? I would like to say that, I won't start a precedent here, but we've never based any of our decisions on deed restrictions. We've had people come in before wanting to bring their deed restrictions in, wanting us to act on them, and our council has told us if you have any problem with deed restrictions, you need to take it to civil court and have it decided in civil court.
Robert, I don't know if I can add something to that. We've got a restriction where you can't bring something back for two years.
That's right.
I don't know if we can add to that, that if something's worked out, maybe they can come back before then?
Sure, you can do that.
Or maybe we address it then.
I think you do it, you have significant changes.
We're not there yet. We haven't voted on the motion.
We have voted on the motion, but I don't know if I need to add that to it or not. Okay, so we can't edit it. That's something we'd address later then.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to deny and second the motion. Any further discussion? If not, we'll have a vote.
Roy Switzer?
Yes.
Drew Alexander?
No.
Paul Mialci?
No.
Shannon Pennington?
No.
Jeff Fritz?
No.
Alan Hapfield?
Yes.
Oliver Farm?
No.
The, uh...
So you deny that the motion is carried.
The motion did not...
At this point, we'll either have to have another motion, make some action.
The motion did not carry, so we'll open the floor again for another motion. I'll make a motion that we approve this final plat for Seven Oaks Tahoe Way Phase Two. Mr. Markham has done everything we asked him to do. He's brought this through the DRT, he's brought it through the work session, and he's come to us, and there's no mention of any changes to the restrictions. It's not under our jurisdiction. We've based everything on the plat that presented the lots' size and given all the requirements of the subdivision and development regulations. So that's going to be my motion to approve. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll have a vote.
Drew Alexander?
Yes.
Paul Mialci?
Yes.
Shannon Pennington?
Yes.
Jeff Fritz?
Yes.
Alan Hapfield?
No.
Roy Switzer?
No.
Oliver Farm?
Yes. Okay, this is, the motion then is approved, the final plat of this, of this Phase Two, of this Phase One of Tahoe Way. Next on our agenda is a new business, a new construction. There is no new business complication, a motion to give order to the agenda.
No, ma'am.
I'll second.
Paul Hapfield?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Can I do this?
Yes.
Oliver Farm?
Yes.
Alan Hapfield?
Yes.
Alan Hapfield?
Yes.
Alan Hapfield?
Yes.
You want to do this?
Yes.